Okay, today is Wednesday, September 4th at 7:00 PM. This is the Riverside School District 96 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Bersadi?
Present.
Ms. Kalik?
Here.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Ms. Clapp?
Here.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Here.
For Mr. President.
Okay. Do we have public comment tonight?
We do not.
We do not? Okay. With that, I will welcome Principal Todd Gierman for a welcome to Ames.
Let me see, they finally got the height of the microphone correct. All right. Good evening, District 96 Board of Education, Dr. Ryan Toy. Please report for the 24-25 school year at year aims. It's all fantastic. So, we're very excited to share, we just finished on our 10th day of school today. So, it's a big accomplishment. We get the ground running, teaching our students routines and expectations, and a lot to assessing our students' current levels that enable our teachers to meet the needs of all other students academically. To foster a positive and welcoming environment, we held a Welcome Back to School SEL Assembly with a luncheon for our new students. So, any new students to Ames. We had a kindergarten dolphin picnic as well, so make sure everybody feels welcome, check in on how the students are doing. Last Friday, we celebrated the start of the school year. We don't want to do it on the first day because it's a little chaotic on the first day, so we postponed it to that Friday. And we had a really festive assembly. I can't think of the gentleman's name. I'm sure he loves advertising. He was a balloon guy. He did these big balloon sculptures, music, dancing. It was a lot of fun. And we're moving forward in the month of September, and we're focusing on teaching our students the importance of teamwork and respect. That's part of our SEL, which I know we have another presentation coming up with the summer work for SEL, so we're well on our way with our SEL curriculum. And we're thrilled with the momentum we've gained so far this school year. We're very excited for the school year ahead. I want to thank the District 96 Board of Education and Dr. Ryan Toy for their continued support for our students and staff here at Ames. Welcome.
Thanks.
Thanks.
With that, are there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda from any of the board members? No? Okay. So, we will jump into Education Committee. Ms. Kalik?
Okay. I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna turn it to Angela and Nora for updates on strategic plan goals one and two.
We're gonna go a little out of order if you...
So sorry.
...do one, then one.
We're gonna talk about...
Just like to keep everyone on their toes.
Oh, okay.
So, there is a change at the Education Committee.
No, it's all under Education Committee, so yeah.
Whatever makes sense to you makes sense to us.
So, we are just gonna present a brief update. It's only really been a few months since our last update on Goal Two, but there was a lot of exciting work done over the summer that we want to share. So, I'm gonna start, we're gonna cover our findings, an update on credit, have some enthusiasm and attendance, some of our practices, brief update on the Renaissance Student Screener, and then an update about the summer SEL work that we had some staff participate in. So, first, just an update to say, I think as you guys know, Pete and I, over the course of last year, participated in an EAB workshop, multi-session workshop called Hardwiring Effective Current Communications to Improve Attendance. It was invited districts across the country, from, you know, one building districts to districts of tons of thousands of students. So, it was really interesting to hear all the different ideas. It was a wealth of information. As DIAD and then as our DLT, we've selected a couple of changes to make initially in our student attendance monitoring and encouraging practices. And some of those are, we did change how we're tracking it for ourselves so that we have a better understanding of what are some of the reasons that students are absent. It just helps us then when we have a student who is reaching a threshold that is more concerning, if we're able to say, oh, you know, there it was. They had an illness. We have a doctor know for those four days, and then they were at a, you know, their travel hockey season started, and they missed two Fridays in a row before tournaments, and just kind of put pieces together versus, nope, they've missed every Thursday and Friday every week because of some external factor that we can maybe support. So, that's a change we made in all buildings. As building leaders, we're all gonna be sharing some common language in terms of information for parents about the impacts of student attendance in the ways that we're already communicating with parents in, you know, back-to-school night, our principal newsletters. These are some tools that came from the workshop about, you know, students who miss more than five days by the end of, or more than three days by the end of September have, you know, a greater likelihood of lower reading scores, and just some of those direct connections between missed school time and what it really adds up to, even if it just seems like it's a day here and a day there. And then the final change we discussed as a team was also just in terms of those thresholds for when do we have someone personally reach out to a family versus, I think, previously, we were kind of triggering some automatic letters and notifications and things like that, but talked about the impact of having the student's teacher reach out and just say, hey, just checking in, just, you know, we really miss having Dan in class, his friends are missing him, just wanted to check in to see if there's anything we can do. So, looking at some of those practices as well. Questions about...
I miss being in class, too.
Yeah. We missed you, Dan. I don't know what to say, but we hope to see you soon. The Renaissance Student Screener, just an update on that, continues to be good news. We've got two full years now of fall and spring administration. And in the memo, I won't read them all now, but I did just give you a reminder of the nine categories that we look at with the screener. And we continue to be well within the expected range at the district school and grade level. This year, we're tweaking our 75-minute after-school professional learning groups a little bit so that the social workers are actually gonna have, all the district social workers are gonna have some time together. And they are very excited to dig into that data another few levels, if you will, just to see, within some of those subgroups, we have some students who are maybe not, or some subgroups that are not across all nine levels at green. We have some yellow here and there. And so, they want to look at those and tie to the interventions that are also a part of this Renaissance screener for the classroom and school level. So, it's continuing to be a good, just temperature, way to take the temperature of the buildings, and looking forward to hearing more from the social workers on that as well as we move through the year. And then the last piece I wanted to highlight tonight, and I invited Kazmira, which I know she feels so lucky to be invited to a board meeting, but I gave her an alley. But I wanted her to be here because she was so, she was essential to this work happening in the summer. The Goal Two Action Team had really, over the course of the year, you know, last year was the first year of using the consistent curriculum across our elementary levels, and they had been providing really good feedback throughout the year of, this is, you know, people are doing it, and, you know, there's definite positives to it. People are asking for more. Really wanting a clear delineation of the scope and the sequence of the SEL work because the lessons on their own are great, but also could use some extra, you know, change up the activity that goes with them, or change up the story that you read with it, or just tying in more resources to each of these concepts to make sure that we're all staying on the same pace throughout the year, and students are having different activities at different grade levels as well. So, as part of that, Kazmira proposed, can we, is it possible to have recruit staff for the summer to really have a chance to dive in on a couple of days in the summer when they're not worrying about everything else that goes on in the school day to create this scope and sequence?
So, thanks. And talking about the resources, too, that's a really, probably good place to start. It's not that we don't have a lack of resources. We actually have an exorbitant amount of wonderful resources. And Second Step, which is the program that we adopted, it's the formal, call it like a CAN program, or very, very specific lessons. Two kids are not getting along on the, you know, on recess, and how do we work through that? What would we say? Kind of talking through those scenarios. That is the program that we just adopted. But that is just, possibly just a portion of it. As you know, a lot of our teachers are also responsive classroom trained, and that is our approach to SEL. So, that is our, our teacher language. When, when do we give directives? How do we give affirming language? If two children are, or, I'm sorry, if a class of students is practicing active listening, like, how do we take that skill and bring it into a social studies lesson when they're talking about moments in history and building upon each other's ideas and asking questions that require more than a yes or no answer? Like that, so responsive classroom is, is the approach. On top of that, we also have PBSS, which is like our Positive Behavior and Support Systems. And if you think about that, it's like the pouring the concrete and the framing of the house, right? It's, how do we move in the hallway when 200 of us are like going between recess and lunch? Or how do we, you know, eat lunch together in a way that's respectful and that we're not shouting at each other or spitting our food out at each other, you know, while we're eating? It's a reality. It's a real thing.
It is.
And so, we talk through all of those pieces. On top of that, there's also been lots of discussions about bringing in, or being more purposeful and intentional about lessons that include diversity and equity and inclusion, and how do we do that in a very thoughtful way and something that feels meaningful to everybody? And so, when a teacher's presented with all of those, it's like, this is all great, but how does it come together? And as Nora said, during the school year, sometimes after like a long school day and you go to a meeting after school, it's like, your mind is tired at that point, and you might get always like an hour or so of like good work done. Whereas in the summer, like people that were very, very passionate about SEL work and that really wanted to do this work and really had, came with a clear mind and could be really thoughtful about working together as a team, were able to present or put together a very comprehensive scope and sequence. Don's just gonna pull that up. And so, this just gives you, like, if you see at the bottom, there's trimester one, trimester two, and trimester three. This is everybody. This is everybody from grades one through five. Kindergarten and pre-K do the PAST program, which is a very comprehensive program on its own. And so, each grade level then took those first, like that set of three spreadsheets and put it into their own folder. But if you look at it with how thoughtful it was, it was separated by trimester, specific dates. It looked at not only the Castle competency, that's like social awareness, like self-management, responsible decision-making. It looked at the aligning our Illinois social-emotional learning standards. It talked about performance descriptors, which are the I-CAN statements, the things that we would have children say, like, you are gonna be able to do this. And then it gave the resources and the materials and all the things, and teachers linked all of that. So, teachers can just open it up and go to that day, and everything that they need is right there. And it basically goes through, like, the first, like, six weeks, they talked about, you know what? We're not really gonna necessarily jump into Second Step at that point. We're gonna really do the first six weeks of school as the responsive classroom approach recommends, and going through and talking about all the pieces of like becoming a classroom community and supporting one another. And they made that decision unanimously. They would work all day, and then it was always the next day we'd come together first thing in the morning, and we would just debrief with one another. And we would talk about the decisions that we made as like individual teams and, you know, come to consensus on areas that we needed to be all aligned, and then they would go back to doing the work again. So, this is not to, you know, make you do difficult reading, you know, from your point, but it's just to show you how thoughtful and comprehensive it was, and just in terms of like what they were able to put together in three days. It was pretty amazing.
Incredible. And it's already getting good feedback from staff who were then, on our opening day, able to open this resource and say like, oh, yeah, I, I know what to do with this. And it's great to just be able to look at it and say, yep, am I still on track? And there are, especially towards the last trimester, and even here, you can see Friday is a catch-up day, so it's not that everyone has to be like, whoops, I didn't get to it on Monday, we're not doing ELA today, we're doing SEL. Really skip ELA, I think, every other day. It just allows for that flexibility while also giving a really solid footing for them to know, like, we're all working on the same things in the same, in the building. It also is, then allows our specials teachers to know, too, like, I don't have to know what first grade's doing, what second grade doing, you know. This is empathy. We're all in empathy. This is, you know, respect. We're all in that, in that realm, too. So, it allows for that reinforcement as well.
Do we show this slide with the people who participate in the...
Yeah, that was on there before, but we can pull that back up to the participants. Don? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so it was representatives from every grade level and then all of our social workers. And so, they, we all...
Yeah.
Yeah. It was, it was just a really great effort.
And if you just go to the last slide, just again, a couple of the quotes we just pulled out at the end, they are from the team that week. You've never seen teachers happier to be working on curriculum and like a project in the summer. They just really felt the difference between being able to focus with their whole brain versus wondering what's happening in my classroom right now. I know all of my children are perfect, but what if today's the day they choose not to be? Yeah. And again, I just want to say, it's, Kazmira, you know, made the framework for the, for the tool that then the teachers filled in, but just did a phenomenal job of leading that work this summer, too. So, as a reward, she got to present. I'm doing a board meeting tonight, but...
Definitely a quality of effort, so that's great.
That's a lot of work, and it looks fantastic.
The teachers did an amazing job.
Yeah.
It was incredible, the work they did.
Yeah, it was very impressive.
So, this is for the classroom engagement, then? Not just for like coordinating materials, but like you could actually, it looked like you clicked those links and like that material just pops up?
Some of them are, yeah, some of them are links to YouTube Readaloud of the story, or some of them are links to, you know, the activity that you do as a class.
Right, like, if there's a handout, it would be a handout that goes along with that activity, or steps to an interactive game, or ways to bring it into science or social studies. So, it's, it's very user-friendly, and the teachers that worked on it were able, in the beginning of the school year, to sit down with teachers and like go through and talk about the scope and sequence and how it was laid out and where to find the resources so that, you know, everyone felt like they were, they were ready to go.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Great job.
Great.
A great job. I did have one question, though, about the previous thing you were talking about with the Renaissance student screener. So, I guess I was interested to note, it talked about self-reporting from second through eighth grades, and I was just wondering, I guess I was trying to picture my two, my second grader, not two-year-old, my second grader, answering that over 15 minutes, and I guess I'm wondering, I'm assuming that the questions are...
The second, second graders take a different version of it from the third through fifth graders, who take a different version of it from the sixth through eighth graders. The second grade version is, I think, only 25 questions. They're all read aloud by the teacher, and you're doing it all together. The third through fifth and sixth through eighth are each 50 questions. Again, different at the different levels, but those are done independently. They can be read aloud, and they're also, if a student needs it in a different language, can be read aloud in that language as well, but is that where you were?
Yeah, yeah, then it's just a question. But I guess, so the program is able to, you know, kind of scale that upward, or they say it's all relevant year to year? You can compare it even though they're different sections or something?
Yeah, so we can look year to year. We can either look at, you know, fourth graders last year and fifth graders this year, you know, to say like, this is, obviously, there are kids that move in and out, et cetera, but as a whole, generally, it's the same group. And so, you can compare, how are they doing on these measures, one year to the next? Because it does offer, the second graders offers, it doesn't give as robust a score for each of the nine just because there are fewer questions, so there's just a little bit more variance. But the others, they all align in the same nine measure, so you can still, even if it's a different measure, a different test, like a fifth to sixth grade, you can still say, you know, in attitudes towards attendance, this cohort has been pretty stable, or has improved when they went to junior high, or has decreased, or things like that. Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, that answers my question. Thanks.
Yeah, of course. Great.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Good evening.
So, I'm here to talk about, update on our path for Goal One. And so, with that, Goal One being about ensuring high levels of learning for all students, part of ensuring high levels of learning for all students is that we ensure high levels of learning for our staff members also, and look at professional learning for this school year. So, with professional learning for this school year, our teams, our staff members will continue to focus on developing collaborative empowered teams. And empowered teams are our district grade-level teams and our district department teams. So, like job-like departments at Hauser, or our special area teachers like Music RPA are an empowered team. They will utilize our 75-minute professional learning sessions and our individualized coachings, and have individualized coaching sessions as well so that we can work on focusing on our learning, our students' learning. With that, we're going to be this year working on providing teachers with strategies and resources where they'll be able to analyze student data across their team to plan for specific student needs. So, really digging into assessment, common assessment data so that we can see where are students doing really well? Where are students having struggles? And how can we, as a team, work to meet those students' needs? Our professional learning for staff members also includes this year a focus on equity and inclusivity. We have participated in the first four of nine sessions with Dr. Yvette Dubiel. The first two sessions, you might remember, we started in April of the '23-'24 school year. We continued the next two sessions at this past Institute Day, and we'll finish off the last five sessions at our October Institute Day and our February Institute Day. Our Standards-Based Grading and Reporting Committee continues to meet. We will be kicking off our work as a district with Standards-Based Grading and Reporting at our October Institute Day also. It's gonna be a busy October Institute Day. The morning will be with Dr. Yvette Dubiel, and then the afternoon, we'll work with Dr. Jan Chapley. Jan Chapley is a leading author on classroom assessments and standards-based instruction, and has worked with Rick Stiggins on standards-based grading and reporting for students. And so, she'll be working with our staff in October on assessments and what the purpose of assessments are, and ensuring that you're using clear learning targets, targets are related to the standards. How do we provide feedback with the assessments that we have? And how do we involve our students in tracking and reflecting and sharing their learning progress based off these assessments? So, that work is work that Jan will be working on with us in the afternoon of October's Institute Day. Our Standards-Based Grading and Reporting Team will also be helping to continue move forward with identifying priority standards. Last year, we worked on identifying our priority standards for mathematics. This year, we are working on science, social studies, and our special area classes. And all this is working towards looking at our reporting tool, our report card, and determining if and how that will need to be refined once all subject areas have priority standards established. As you know, we started Mystery Science this year for our science curricular resource. Every grade level is going to teach a diverse range of science units that will cover physical science or science and life science. Every grade level will cover at least one unit in each of those branches throughout the school year. And the teachers are very excited about the use of this program, and I will, as we're jumping into it, I will continue to provide periodic updates to the board on how that's going. And as we talk about new curricular resources, this is our first year of implementing Amplify Core Language Knowledge, which is Amplify CKLA. We had Institute Day where we had a virtual professional learning session, but we are moving forward from that virtual session and started today with grade-level sessions, so specific to each grade level. So, today, kindergarten met in the afternoon, first grade met in the morning. And we worked on diving into our materials, learning about the structure of kindergarten and first grade and second grade have a skills lesson every day, which teaches phonemic awareness and phonics, and they have a knowledge lesson every day, too. So, in that 90-minute block of ELA, they'll learn phonics, and then knowledge focuses on comprehension. So, we looked at the structure of both skills lessons and knowledge lessons, and looked at how to access the different materials, both their teacher manual, but also digitally, and looked at how we're going to support students who might need extra support, looked at how we support our English language learners, as well as looked at how we will provide enrichment as well. And then both grade levels started planning, working on their scope and sequence for the year, for the first trimester, as well as digging into the planning and planning out those first lessons within Unit One. I said we started today, but we actually started last week with our English language learners. They had a full day of training. Theirs was a full day because they're utilizing not just CKLA and supporting classroom work, but they have, or you might remember, we have students who are in our TBE program, and those are students who receive language arts in English and in Spanish. So, they have a separate series called Caminos that our Yale learners, our Yale teachers had to learn about also so that they're prepared to teach Caminos to our TBE students, but also are able to support CKLA for our students who are in our other program, which is our TPI program. And we are going to continue that. So, today was kindergarten first. Tomorrow, we'll have third grade in the morning, second in the afternoon. And Friday, we'll have fifth grade in the morning, fourth grade in the afternoon. Monday, on our first 75-minute professional learning session, staff members will use that time with their empowered teams to, their grade-level empowered teams to continue planning and digging into the materials that they've learned about this week. They'll use that 75-minute PD to continue that work. In October, mid to late October, beginning of November, we'll have Amplify Coaches come to the elementary buildings. They'll have a schedule where they'll meet with those empowered teams so that they can provide personalized professional learning, addressing the needs that that grade level at that school is having at that time. And we'll have a few coaching sessions throughout the year at the schools. So, that's Amplify. And then the final piece of professional learning is just, we wrapped up new teacher mentoring right before school started. That ran from Tuesday, August 13th through Thursday, August 15th. We had 13 new teachers who met over the course of those three days to learn more about Riverside School District 96, building relationships, establishing safe, secure, and inclusive learning environments, learning about our strategic plan and our values and beliefs. And they will continue to meet monthly with Sarah Hickey, who's our teacher leader for mentoring. And I will be introducing those staff members at our September board meeting coming up here in a couple of weeks, where they'll be invited to come. No pressure to come if they have other engagements, other commitments. But we will also share their baseball card, which we did last year. We did it again this year, so we'll share their baseball cards whether they are here or not. So, that is a quick summary of our professional learning plans for this school year. Before I go on, is there, are there any questions about professional learning?
You know I have questions. Go ahead.
Sorry, I have a question. Is it typical for the, the English curriculum to be kind of planned as it goes?
That's how we did it with math. Just when you get new curricular resources and you start with them in the beginning of the year, then that is how we end up planning. With Mystery Science, we were fortunate that we had adopted it in, I believe, March.
Yeah.
So, we were able to access the resources early, or at the end of last year. So, we planned that scope and sequence at our, we planned that scope and sequence at a professional learning time that we had at the end of the year. But with I-Reddy, we got the resources because we adopted, we approved it later in the year, around May with I-Reddy, same with ELA. We didn't get the resources, we don't get the resources till the start of school in August, and so, we do plan as we go, and that's what we did with I-Reddy also.
I was curious.
Yeah, no, great question.
So, less about the details, more just about like how it all integrates together? So, like in a lot of these, you're like, you know, this PD, that PD. So, is this just as each month, or what, I don't remember exactly what our cadence is? Is it just, there's like a theme that gets followed? Because of, like, I'm just thinking with the empowered teams that crosses all grade levels, and that's a 75-minute after-school thing, but then you've got the Amplify Core, which is just elementary, but that's also in the 75, so I'm just, how does that all...
Yes, so, all of our professional learning, we work really hard as administrative team to make sure professional learning is connected. And so, it is all connected. It's just the different types of work we're doing. The overarching theme for all our professional learning is working in our empowered teams. So, we are, for most 75-minute PDs, we're working on becoming better collaborative teams. Our staff members are collaborative teams as it is. We're just working on defining some of that collaboration that they do at some of the 75-minute PDs. At other 75-minute PDs, we look at them as a curricular professional learning session, which is what Monday, upcoming Monday, is going to be. It's curricular focused. So, for kindergarten through fifth, it's Amplify CKLA. For sixth through eighth, it's working on, for math, My Perspectives, because we're utilizing a new version of My Perspectives, and at the junior high, like their updated version. So, we're utilizing that for math. It's working with Carnegie, our resource for mathematics. For science, they're working with Quap, their, their series of iQuest. And so, everybody's working on curricular work during that one. It just happens to be that for elementary, it's CKLA. For our Institute Days, you'll see Standards-Based Grading and Learning because that's a larger chunk of time for us to do that. that's a larger chunk of time for us to do that type of work.
And that's across the board, across grade levels, too, right?
Yep, that's across K through eight, and looking at all areas, too, not just core subjects, but encore as well. And then we bring some of that work back to that empowered teamwork, possibly on a 75-minute as well. And then just as part of our ongoing strategic plan work, we also build in a couple of SEL, professional learning sessions during our 75-minute after-school sessions, where we have a focus that we continue to maintain the work we're doing with our staff on SEL, too.
Okay.
Did that answer the question?
Yeah, I think so. The empowered teams is sort of the underlying foundation that these other things are?
Yes.
It's not the constant, it's not a constant series of learning, it's sort of the foundation of it, and then you layer on sort of the specifics of each grade level. Okay. And then, one thing that I struggle with at my job is, it's great, you have all these people, you do all this training, and then 10 new people come in, and you're like, hmm, hmm. Have we thought about that as we bring in new?
Absolutely. Yes. Sarah Hickey and Sam Crowley and Melanie Arazi, our three instructional coaches, are sitting in on the Amplify CKLA trainings that we have all three days. Sam and Sarah are sitting in on all three days. Melanie is joining for fourth and fifth, because she focuses more on the upper grade levels, including middle school. And so when we then have new teacher orientation, this is built into the work we do in August.
Okay.
So Sarah already, Sarah and Sam, this past new teacher orientation, they covered iReady, and they covered the learning that needed to happen for iReady to get staff members up and running with iReady. And next year, they'll do that with Amplify CKLA and iReady. And they also provide them that look into how science is structured and the scope and sequence for science. And then we have mentors, mentor teachers also.
Yeah, okay.
They help with the planning and the instruction and what you need to know, and we give them a calendar of, these are the things that you'll want to cover from month to month. So they have that as well, that helps guide them with new curricular resources.
How unique is this? Will, will there be a foundational knowledge of most of this stuff, new people coming into the district, or will this be new, or does it just kind of depend?
It just depends on where they come from. So in terms of EL, well, both ELA and iReady, many districts are starting to adopt iReady and Amplify CKLA. So if we were to hire new teachers that have experience, some of them might come in with knowledge of CKLA. But then there are also, we hire new teachers, or we hire teachers who have used different resources, and so they might not come in with that knowledge, so we might have to start from the ground up with them.
That makes sense, because you talked about going and visiting some of those schools, too. I guess I was thinking more of the, like, the empowered teams. Is that, is that like a new thing?
No, it's not. It's actually something that's been going on in education for years. Empowered teams are the same as you might have heard of professional learning communities. So they're the same as PLCs. So many districts actually utilize professional learning committees, or communities, and do this type of work in districts at their end.
Okay, so, yeah, all right. So this isn't exactly drinking from a fire hose.
No, it is not.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. And then I think you kind of answered this, but like, coaches, how do the coaches fit in? So they're, they're helping facilitate a lot of this stuff, and then I know, like, being in the classroom and trying to do some of that side-by-side stuff, is there anything else?
They, for those that are going to Elementary Parent Night tomorrow night, they have helped with the presentation for all subject areas, but for Amplify specifically, because the teachers didn't have enough of a foundational knowledge yet to be able to say to parents, this is what we're going to be doing. So Sam and Sarah worked at self, teaching themselves about the concepts, the foundational pieces of it, so that they were able to share them with the teachers, what they want, what they should present to parents tomorrow night. And then, as I said, they're in the trainings, they'll go in the classes and help coach. They're developing a resource toolkit for teachers as we're in these trainings. We're working on a, like, it's like an FAQ, but it's more of a, here's a summary of everything we learned over the course of three days. Because some of the things that we learned with first grade were specific to first grade, but could apply to some things kindergarten teachers do, too, but they weren't there. So we're also keeping, running records of the things that might be beneficial for any grade level, regardless of what session it is. So Sam, Sarah, and Melanie on Friday have been crucial to the implementation already of Amplify CKLA.
Okay. Last question, kind of an easy one. So we've been talking about the standard grades reporting stuff. Sounds like we're coming to the end of figuring that out, so when should we expect this shift to happen?
Right. So we will work on our, running our draft, not really draft, what am I, working, our working calendar for this process, has us working on prioritizing standards for science, social studies, and special area classes this year, so that we can take this year to get used to our ELA resource.
Okay.
Next year, and that's what we did with iReady, we took the first year to get used to the math resource, and then the second year, we prioritize standards. So next year, we'll prioritize our ELA standards. And then, so that's the 25-26 year. So then 26-27 is when we are hoping to then look at, and if needed, revise our reporting tool for implementation in the 27-28 school year. So three, not three years. This year, next year for ELA prioritization, okay, 26, 26-27 for the report card tool for implementation, 27-28, yes. Because 26-27 will also involve educating families.
Yeah, okay, because that was, I was going to leave that one off the table, because this is moving away from like the A through F or one through four scale to something completely different.
Most likely, yes. Where you're looking at meeting standards, achieving standards, exceeding standards.
Oh, it's just going to look like that, and it's not going to be like a new?
That's what we've seen in the past. The committee hasn't formally decided anything, but that's what most districts move to.
Okay, so we've still got three more years to talk about this.
Unfortunately.
Okay, I didn't say unfortunately.
I mean, I say unfortunately, because this is a topic that probably to you as a board feels like it's been forever that we've been talking about it. But if you, if you talk to any of our staff members who have been here for quite a few years, it's something that's been worked on even before I came here. So it's something that many people wish was moving a little bit faster, but we want to make sure we do it right, because I have seen it struggle in other districts.
Yeah.
When it's not done right. So we want to make sure we're doing it right, but we also want to make sure we're not dragging our feet too much.
What is the struggle? I mean, it feels fairly straightforward, so I'm just curious.
It does feel straightforward, right? Just the education for families, helping families understand, because moving from letter grades to meeting expectations or exceeding expectations is hard for anybody, adults and students, who are used to, I got a 90%, what does that mean? Well, a 90% might mean I'm meeting the grade level standards, and in our sense, we're thinking of a 90% as an A, and wouldn't that be exceeding? So it's just helping people understand that standards work is not tied to percentages, it's more tied to mastery of content.
Yeah, okay, all right.
When you talk about prioritization of standards, is that like we're reinventing the wheel of what standards happen at each grade level, or what, how do you define prioritization of standards?
So we look at all the standards that are required by the Illinois State Standards for, we'll say for math at first grade, and we look at what standards as a first, we start with what standards as a first-grade teacher do I feel are the most important standards that kids need to definitely master before they leave first grade. Because there are some standards that, we'll teach all the standards, but there are some that students don't have to master to get, like, to be successful in second grade, because they're going to revisit in second. So what are the things that I know my second-grade colleagues want to make sure my kids know when they are finished in first grade? And those are what we prioritize. And then we look vertically and look to see, okay, what did kindergarten say they're going to prioritize? Are there any gaps between what they're prioritizing and what we need at first? And then first meets with second grade and looks at, this is what we said we're going to prioritize, this is what they're coming with from kindergarten, and second says, oh, wait, we need this, because you don't realize that, like, we need to make sure they can do double-digit addition, or double-digit plus single-digit addition, because we've got to get into double-digit plus double-digit addition. And you didn't know that, so can you go back and look at this and maybe prioritize this also? So it's looking at the grade level standards that are already set for a grade level and determining what do we want to absolutely make sure they master before they leave that grade level.
Okay. I guess I'm sort of surprised that that doesn't happen at like an Illinois State level of standards, because these, these standards that we're prioritizing would ultimately land on the report card?
Yes, they would ultimately land on ours, yes.
Okay.
In some way, shape, or form. So it may not be each standard listed out.
Yeah.
It might be standards grouped. So number and operations might be the group on a report card, but then the teacher would then comment on their meeting standards, because they're doing well in these two standards under numbers and operations, but they still need work in this standard that is under numbers and operations. So it might be listed out standard by standard, it might be grouped, those are some of the things that we'll talk about. In terms of the state prioritizing standards, they have in some ways, but we're, and we utilize that tool as a jumping point for our work, but there are some that we feel as a high-performing district that we want to make sure we also include in those grade levels. So we start as a baseline with what the state established, but just looking at resources, looking at our students, looking at our scores and MAP, as well as iReady, as well as the state, the IAR for the grades that take it, we might add a few more, or we might say, this actually isn't tested on the IAR, so maybe this one doesn't need to be a priority necessarily. So we do use what the state has produced as a starting point. That state-produced document, though, is also from 20, from the pandemic years.
Got it.
So it's been a couple of years, too.
Okay, helpful, thanks.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll look to hear more on that in the years ahead. It sounds like we have a few years left of it.
Just a few, just a few. And then the other thing, any other questions about professional learning, standards-based grading, any of those fun things? So the other thing that, under the Education Committee, that I wanted to discuss with you is this year's review, the cycle, what we're reviewing for this year under the review cycle. So you're familiar with, we have a review, five, five-to-six, seven-year review cycle for all subject areas, and that includes our advanced learning areas. The Advanced Learning Program was last reviewed between the fall of 2016 and the spring of 2018. In the fall of 2016, a committee was formed, they worked with a consultant to survey the District 96 community, research various program models, determine the model that best met the needs at that time, and then decide what diagnostic tools would be used for qualification in the Advanced Learning Program. And by the spring of 2018, they had formed what is now our Advanced Learning Program from identification to qualification to the actual programming that happens in our schools. And so in the spring of 2018, since the spring of 2018, any students who have qualified for Advanced Learning in District 96 have qualified based off of the matrix that was developed by that committee, through the work of that committee. So it's been about six years that we've been utilizing this Advanced Learning Process. And being a district that's committed to continuous improvement, we've been watching how the Advanced Learning Program has been working for our students, from identification through the work that we are doing with curricular resources and curriculum frameworks as well. And throughout these six years, about six years, many people have commented on ways we might improve on how we meet our Advanced Learning students' needs, including identification. We have an identification process right now that's heavily, that's completely based on assessments, from cognitive assessments, the COGAD is often used, to the MAP test is used for ability assessments, and then we have curriculum-based assessment that we use at the spring. So to get into the Advanced Learning Program currently, based off this metric, you, matrix, you have to qualify through at least two of those three assessment points. So there have been just questions about how we might, how might we be able to improve access to our Advanced Learning Program? How might we improve the services that we provide our students? The Advanced Learning Teachers, and one of them is here tonight, happy to see her, the Advanced Learning Teachers have done a great job of working out how do we provide enrichment to our primary students, specifically our third graders, because the formal point of entry for Advanced Learning doesn't start till fourth grade for ELA and fifth grade for math. So how are we still meeting the needs of Advanced Learners before those formal points of entry? And that's something that we continue to work on and continues to evolve even to this day. So looking at reviewing the program, reviewing qualifications, reviewing our entry points, and reviewing the curricular resources that we use for Advanced Learning, it's about time for us to take that on and look at that and see if we might be able to better meet our Advanced Learning students' needs. So after reviewing the work of several consultants, Kimberly Freitag, Laura Belchenko, and then the Northwestern Center for Talent Development, after reviewing the work that they've done as consultants, I, it's my recommendation that we move forward to Northwest Center for Talent Development, because they can do a robust review with us of our program. They'll look at, understand the needs of our Advanced Learners by doing a document review of our current programming and identification, and the demographics of our current, our Advanced Learners, as well as the academic records of our current learners, too, to see if it's currently meeting their needs. They'll look at stakeholder values and priorities through surveys and focus groups of parents, staff, administrators, and students. They'll work to understand the degree to the, how we're currently meeting our Advanced Learning needs through classroom observations. And then they would work to summarize all of that information to provide recommendations as we look at how would we want to move forward in adjusting our programming so that we are better able to meet our students' needs, as well as be more inclusive, too. When you think about the school report card, and one of the indicators on the school report card is the number of students who are in eighth graders who receive algebra instruction. For us, those are kids who are in advanced eighth-grade math, that's where they're getting algebra instruction. So if we don't have an inclusive program, or it's hard to get in because it's all based on testing, our numbers are lower than other districts are. And so that's another thing we want to look at, is how are we providing more opportunities for students to receive algebra instruction by eighth grade? So that will come, that is something that could also come out of this program review as well. So because Northwest Center for Talent Development is able to, and has done with other districts, this more robust review process, that would be why I would recommend that we move forward with the Northwestern Center for Talent Development. They would, throughout the process, we'd start in September now with a committee selection. Then we would go through this process with the goal of beginning to implement the plan in the spring with identification. So we would be working to have a new identification process by the end of this school year for this, for identification for next school year. And there would be, they would make periodic reports to our committee as they're going through the focus groups, the surveys, the document reviews, all of those pieces, they'll make periodic reports to the committee, and I, of course, would bring periodic reports to the board as well. So that's the path for the Advanced Learning Review. Any questions?
The timeline just seemed quick compared to some of the other stuff we do.
It is.
Is that just because it's really an assessment and moving pieces around, adding, subtracting, whatever, rather than like a curriculum that needs to be absorbed?
Yes. And because, as I was talking with them and talking about what our needs were, what our, what our hopes were for this review, and they were talking about how they structure this review, we have a lot of stuff in place already as far as the document review, so it's not going to be a lot of work to pull together some of the document reviews that they need to do, and so that piece is actually a quicker process for them as well.
Okay. And I heard you kind of hit like the testing and stuff, and you and I have had a conversation about this.
I've had that conversation with many parents.
I'm sure you have. So we're, I mean, it, I don't know, I don't want to assume this, it sounds like we're looking for a way to get away from just pure testing, standard-based acceptance, or is it more than that, or?
As a Director of Teaching and Learning, my goal would be that we have a more inclusive identification process.
That's why.
I don't know yet what that looks like, and that's where some of their recommendations in their work, because they do this work, right? So that's another reason why using Northwestern Center for Talent Development is a good idea, because they've done this with other districts, but this is also their work. You might be familiar with, they have advanced programming classes and such, and structures in the summer for students to come and take classes. So this is, this is their thing, so I think they can come to us once they're looking at, here's what we have, here's what we do, here's what our families want, because they're going to have surveys and focus groups, and as I said, I've had the same conversation with other parents, too, and I've been telling parents through the appeal process this year, this summer, I've been telling them, we're going to do a review, and we're going to have a survey, and I need you to fill out that survey. So through that, I think exactly what you're saying is going to probably come out, and then we'll see what the recommendations are and move forward. But as a Director of Teaching and Learning, knowing what the end goal is, which is for more students to have access to and opportunities towards algebra instruction, we need something a little bit more inclusive.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't want to get that misconstrued, like, we're not trying to water it down and just put more people in it.
Exactly.
Like, they need to.
You need to be able to do the work.
Yeah, you need to be able to do the work.
And be successful.
You need to be able to be successful.
Right.
But like.
But I think we have people on the cusp.
Yeah.
Who can be successful, but just may not test.
Right.
Into showing they're successful.
I just always get a little squeamish when it's like, nope, your testing isn't there, and like, that's the only factor we use, so, okay.
Right, yeah.
And I guess it was mentioned, this isn't a curriculum review, so I guess I'm a little bit more accustomed to seeing several vendors evaluated against each other, and I guess this is a fairly small bid to begin with, but is it the timeline that, that's limiting But is it the timeline that's limiting it basically just to one that we're seeing here? Or is it, just they're the only ones that do something like this?
No, as I said, I talked with Laura, Kimberly Freitag, and I am, Laura Belchenko has worked with our district before. She actually was a consultant that worked with our district to develop our current programming. So knowing the work that was done and knowing the scope of the work that we need to do, that's where the Northwestern Talent Development Center came in as the best option for us right now.
Okay.
Is it basically just a hundred fifty bucks an hour? I mean, I was trying to figure out, I know it's like a week here, a week there, but then it's like you could do other things for a hundred fifty bucks an hour, and I wasn't sure.
So each piece has that fee on that contract. So the document review is a thousand dollars total. Each piece has that fee. That hundred fifty dollars an hour is the follow-up work for the work that we do based off the recommendations.
Okay, so they basically just said a week's worth of work, whatever we need to provide you is gonna cost this. And so it wasn't like a, okay. I was just trying to figure out how...
And they base that off of the size of the district. So larger districts would take more time, would cost more.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
Any other questions for me?
Doesn't sound like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, I think, finance. So Mr. Rosati, TTO.
So, yes. So as you know, we discussed last time about moving away from the TTO, the interim, excuse me, the interim position is to nominate Jim Vinton to act on our behalf. This just sort of formalizes it. There's a memo that you can see at the end here. He also provided some invoices we paid for the last year, so we have an idea of what his cost. There's still some, he's gonna be working on, like, what actually we'll be having to take over, so we get a little bit more detail of what we're gonna be doing. But again, this is sort of just, we have a year to sort of explore this. And this is just basically the start of that. So from that, I guess, Jim, I'll turn it over to you, or if there's any questions about sort of the next steps, or we just have to formally nominate him. Unless, of course, Wes, you want to take that one.
I don't. I nominated you last time.
Yeah.
No takes and backs.
So next meeting, there'll be a resolution to vote on appointing trustees.
Right, okay.
Within thirty days, there'll be a meeting of all the new trustees and to reorganize the treasurer. I hope to learn a lot at that meeting.
Is there anything new since the last time that we discussed this, or just, no?
No.
Okay. So next month, next meeting, we'll nominate you, and you'll spend however many months figuring out what we want to. That's just it?
The withdrawal can be anytime. It doesn't, there's no deadline on that.
As long as it's before July one.
Well, even if you did it a year later, it'd be the next July one.
Right.
It would be effective.
It takes effect July one, our decision.
So you'd have to make it June 30th if you don't want to participate the next year.
Right.
Or July 2nd, but you have to wait a whole year.
Yeah.
That's how I read it, so, okay. Okay. Thanks. An easy one for us. All right. I don't think we have anything from facilities.
No.
Yep, okay. And policy, Ms. Gunn's not here tonight, personnel?
I'll add a quick, just sort of organizational detail. So if you recall, we looked at press 115. That was the one that was pretty short, at the last board meeting? And then we'll approve that at the September board meeting. Press 116 has already been introduced. That we have until the end of December, right, Kathy, to get that approved? So likely, we bring that to October Cow. Kind of thought like it would make sense to finish one, then start the next one, rather than introducing press 116 tonight. We'll introduce that at the October Cow. We also, and I'll share this at the September Board or October Cow, but the State Board of Ed has asked us for an update on our attendance and truancy policy. As we know, that chronic absenteeism, overall school attendance has just become a very significant statewide, nationwide conversation post-pandemic. And what we just learned is that our attendance and truancy policy was customized in 2008 and is not compliant with the state requirements, essentially. So I'd like to bring that forward, so that we can, interestingly, the recommended press policy that I'm not sure how we got away from is compliant. So I think it's a pretty easy switch, but just, I will share that with all of you in Board Book and can actually push it out to you in one-way communication sooner rather than later. It's not a significant change, but there's enough nuance to it that I would like to ideally look at that policy, maybe at the September 18th board meeting, and potentially approve it all on the same night, because the state is asking us to submit, right, our compliant policy by September 30th. So it's just been, and thanks to Kathy for doing some research on like, how did we get off track here? If you read them side by side, you might say like, what's missing? And there's just a few pieces that the state wants there. Again, our practices, I think, are really solid. It's not so much that, it's just how it's represented in policy. There's probably been not as much attention to that policy.
Do we have any idea on why they diverged, or what the intention or the file was?
You know what Kathy was able to track down through the Illinois Association of School Boards, through press, is that somewhere we customized our own policy in 2008. The only thing, again, it's a guess, because none of us would recall from 2008, they have fairly good record-keeping to know that we had a customized policy. But I'm just wondering if it wasn't an issue, and so they, but that is a guess on my part.
Is it possible that you could provide the one that we have, the new one?
Yes, sure.
I know before, like, agendas normally go out, but if you could send that.
Yeah, and because I know, I don't, I know no one likes to sort of look at something one night and vote on it, but I can share it out to all of you, like I said, in one-way communication, and then point out to you the differences. I think I had to read it multiple times. I'm like, what is the difference here? What's the part that's missing? But the state asks that you have certain component parts in the policy, because I think they are just looking to make sure that all school districts in the state of Illinois are effectively addressing any attendance or truancy issues.
You're way too optimistic here, but is it possible that in 2008, we were trying to go for a higher standard, and the state has caught up and perhaps surpassed?
What do you think, Kathy, from looking at it, talking to, there was, we were sort of struggling with the, understanding the rationale behind it?
Yeah, it came out last year, I think it was October of 2023. And because we had customized our policy in the beginning, Press Plus never brought it to our attention, because we did kind of customize it, so.
Yeah, what Press Plus typically does is that they take our originally-developed policy, bring it into greater compliance with the law, but it wasn't all fully there. So we'll fix it. I'd like to fix it in the month of September.
Okay. And we don't have any content for personnel, so I'm assuming that's still the case, okay? And yes, no additional public comment. Kathy, not seeing anybody? So that brings us to future meeting dates. Our next regular business meeting will be at 7:00 PM on September 18th at the Hauser Learning Resource Center. The October 2nd meeting is canceled, and last meeting, we, I had indicated October 16th. I think we had gotten mixed up on our calendar here. So everybody is available on October 9th. Not everybody is available on October 16th, so we are gonna go with the 9th. We're just gonna do one meeting, and it'll be a regular meeting and a Cow meeting. I think is what we decided to do. This is just saying regular meeting, but we're gonna combine that together. We'll make sure that the content is kind of around that two-hour mark as well. As of right now, we don't foresee anything that's gonna be super long, so I think that should be doable. And with that, we do not have any closed session, so this meeting is adjourned.